I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, in the middle high school library. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I know there is one, I know there is one thing for, for, uh, speaking during the hearing of visitors. Anybody else besides Donna that has anything that they want to add? Donna, go ahead.
Hi. I'm ironic, he's not here, but at last little committee meeting, the CPAC team awarded a team and teacher and professional with special education award. While the team was searching through the list of nominees, the team noticed one name that stood out, James Robbins, the Director of Student Services. We all realized that James would be too modest to accept this nomination on his behalf because he would not want to take away from any of our wonderful educators. James has gone above and beyond for our kids. He is always ready to help work with our parents and for so many other reasons that would just take too long. Therefore, on behalf of the CPAC team, I am thrilled to present James with an honorary special education award to thank him for his tireless efforts and recognize him for his devotion to our children, family, and educators. Ironically, it's the only time he's not here. So we just wanted to show it's just a good honorary award for him. He's done a fabulous job for all of us. I'm just gonna give it to you.
Yes. Thank you, Donna. I think I speak for everybody that, um, Dr. Robbins has done an amazing job since he's come onboard. So, thank you to the CPAC for acknowledging him. Donna, thank you for coming. Yeah, we'll make sure, Mr. Schaefer will make sure it gets to him. So we appreciate it.
I'll also make him listen to the very nice things that you said about him. We can, we can replay it because he should hear those things.
Um, so moving on, we just have the reading and approval of records from our last meeting on May 23rd. If, as, after you have a chance to review, if anybody would like to make a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, up next, report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Basta.
Good evening, everybody. Really quick tonight. Recently, you approved our school calendar for next year. Since that time, DESI released required MPAS testing dates for high schools in Massachusetts, and one of them conflicts with one of our planned PD days in March. So, we have suggested moving that March 26th date to March 19th where there's no conflict. And the only other changes to that calendar are not related to dates. It's just we added some informational items for families that are duplicated on the date green calendar. But this is what would be posted online.
No, this is awesome. Those dates on the bottom, that's an awesome addition. I think everybody's gonna like that when they see it.
Especially the graduation dates. I think like no one ever knows when graduation. So that's great.
No, so that's awesome. I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Basta on this? I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Basta. Principal reports. Revised presentation for the handbook, Mr. McCurran.
Good evening. You should have revised handbook changes for Abington Middle School provided in your packet this week. For this month, after last month's meeting, I did bring your suggestions back to the Abington Middle School Council. And after removal of the language that was in question at the last meeting, which the council agreed to, we realized that the dress code as proposed would very much match the high school, just with different words. So rather than have an inconsistent thing that says the same thing, we decided to propose consistent language, five to twelve. So what you have in front of you actually matches what happened in high school.
Thank you to you, Ms. Sullivan and the school council for going back and taking under advisement. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions on the updated language, Mr. McCurran? I know we talked about it last time, so. Okay, if not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the recommended dress code language that's on page two to go into the middle school handbook.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McCurran. Up next, Mrs. Robinson, presentation of the 2023-2024 AEP School Improvement Plan.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. For those of you that I have not yet met, my name is Ian Robinson. I'm the Director of the Abington Early Education Program. And I'm so pleased to be with you here today to share some highlights of the work that's happening at AAP each day in support of our youngest learners and to share the goals that we are proposing for the work in the coming year. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the council at AAP. They are, share their time and energy in the work of continually improving our school, and for that, I'm, I'm very grateful. I'm particularly grateful to our parent representatives for their willingness to volunteer their time, as I'm sure we all can remember the busy life of a parent with preschool-aged children. Our parent representatives this year are Ms. Jessica Murphy. Mrs. Murphy has two children in our program this year, and her older child will be moving on to Beaverbrook next fall as a kindergartner, but her younger child will be with us again. And Ms. Sarah Gagler, Gagler is our second parent representative, and she is, uh, she currently has a child enrolled in the program, and she also has a child at Beaverbrook who is an alumni. Mrs. Katie and Mrs. Casey Briggs are our staff representatives, and Ms. Julie Groom is the School Committee Representative to the Abington Early Education Program. In reviewing the previous school improvement goal, well, school improvement plan, there were four identified goals. I'll identify each of the goals and then just share some highlights related to each goal area. The first goal was a goal around teaching and learning, and the goal was to continue to identify and implement developmentally appropriate curriculum materials and activities to differentiate between preschool and pre-kindergarten levels. We spent and continue to spend a great deal of time addressing issues related to curriculum. What do we teach? How do we teach it? How do we measure learning? And how do we ensure that all children are being exposed to or receiving similar content? This can be tricky in the preschool setting where the teaching occurs through play, and in the most successful settings, it's child-driven. One of the first items we worked on as a team in addressing this goal was to review the guidelines for preschool learning experiences that are set forth by DESI. We spent several professional development periods working with the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment to look at what our current practice is and how it aligns with the guidance from DESI. We worked to identify specific standards from the guidelines to create what we call the AEP prime standards, and you'll see those at the end of your packet there, in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. That's really our starting point for ensuring consistency across all of our classrooms. The final highlight of this goal was having Vicki Graham, our technology specialist, working directly with teachers in their classrooms on a weekly basis to support implementation of the amazing technology, our touchscreens that were installed in each classroom last summer. She worked to train staff. She troubleshooted the inevitable issues that come up with any new tool, and she worked to create applications that were specific to our children and to our teaching staff and their needs. The second goal was to continue to expand the opportunities afforded by the co-located preschool, middle school, and high school here at 201 Glenowitz. And this really was such a fun goal to work on because there are so many benefits to our location. And while I'll mention the highlights of our work to date, this will also be a goal that you'll see that will be moving forward into our proposed school improvement plan for next year. Some of the highlights include the high school intern program. We were able to get that moving again after a little bit of a hiatus with our COVID. This year, we were able to support approximately 12 seniors as interns at AAP, and then we also were able to bring in some juniors towards the end of the year and provide them with opportunities to be working in our classrooms. The student commitment range, pardon me, from two days per week, uh, two periods per week, up to four, and we had some students that really wanted to keep coming back. Anytime they had any three period, they really wanted to be down at AAP, working with the students, which was great. The students enjoyed, our students, the AAP students, enjoyed interacting with high school students, and it really brings a different dynamic to the day when the students are with us. It's a really neat energy. Additionally, we're able to access the gymnasium on a regular schedule, which allows teachers to address the gross motor components that are identifying the guidelines. We attended concert rehearsals. We paraded at Halloween through the high school hallways, and we were able to use the grass field for incredibly successful end-of-the-year celebration this year, during which, by the way, a number of student interns were able to assist us and meet some of the parents, which was kind of neat. The third goal was to provide ongoing opportunities to teach and reinforce good citizenship, social skills, resilience, and core values. In, in work towards this goal, we had social work interns that were with us. This school year that we're just ending, and the year prior, we had student interns that were with us two days and three days respectively. And they were working with our students directly in the classrooms. They were working with families. They worked to identify resources for families, and it was really a, um, a nice addition to our program. Additionally, we were implementing the direct teaching of social skills lessons. And this, this goal is kind of really the meat of preschool. It's identifying and naming emotions and feelings, modeling responses to social exchanges, developing peer interactions, creating resilient children, and fostering that love of learning. It's what our teachers do every single day in both natural and contrived settings. The fourth goal is to strengthen parent and community involvement and engagement, and this is another goal that you'll see moving forward into our proposed school improvement plan this year. And some of the highlights of that goal were our monthly newsletters to families, our Facebook page that is updated on a fairly routine basis with pictures of photographs of students engaged in a variety of activities throughout their days, ongoing communication by individual classroom teachers and our service providers with families, ongoing outreach and consultation to private community preschools, ongoing coordination with early intervention agencies, and monthly visits from the Abington Public Library and the classroom story times. That gives you a sense of some of the work we've been focusing on the past couple of years. And moving forward, you have before you proposed goals for the upcoming school year, and you'll see some similarities to the previous goals, which I think is important as we work to build consistency and continuity across our program across the years. So our first goal is to investigate and pilot thematic units of study utilizing developmentally appropriate evidence-based curriculum materials and activities, integrating available technology into daily instructional practice with consistency across classrooms. So this is really getting at that teaching and learning and the inclusion of technology across our classrooms. We're gonna work on expanding the work we've done with regard to curriculum. With the long-term goal is to have created a curriculum that spans the school year, thematic-based. So think, uh, Community Helpers, Harvest, All About Me, units that are, um, complete with identified standards related to the guidelines, learning activities, technology supports, and progress monitoring tools to consistently measure student growth. Our second goal is to maximize opportunities and resources afforded by the co-located preschool. So again, our time, our location being co-located, and how do we expand upon that as well as strengthening parent and community engagement. And some of the bullets for this goal include creating, distributing, and analyzing a parent engagement survey. We've had, um, we've been challenged to get a PTO off the ground at AAP in the last couple of years, and we're not really sure why that is. So we really wanna gather some information from our families to see what is it that they're looking for? How do they wanna be more involved? What types of activities would they like to be involved in? We'll throw out some ideas, some volunteer opportunities, the idea of having classroom parents versus a formal PTO. The big goal here is just to increase caregiver involvement at AAP. Preschool, for these students, this is the entree to this public school system. So this is their first experience with Abington Public Schools. And of course, we want it to be positive, but we also wanna make sure that that partnership is felt from the very start. So that's a really big component of that goal. And then additionally, expanding the high school intern program, really working to, um, expand the opportunities for the students and, um, as well as creating some of the accountability on the students, like the high school student side, of being involved in it. So it's not just a kind of drop-down though. We'll try and have some activities related to that. The third goal is to explore opportunities for early education accreditation. So this is looking at making sure that we're providing high-quality programming for our students at AAP. I know the great work that goes on there each day, but being an accredited program underscores that to anyone that looks at our program. The National Association for the Education of Young Children accreditation process is long and can be cumbersome, but it is an important one, and I think it's one that we, it is very important for us to pursue. So we'll look to complete the first step of this process, which entails completing a lengthy self-study, and it identifies the 10 areas of the, um, of NEUIC, which are, I need to list them all for you, but they're closely related to what our, um, what our teaching goals are. The accreditation process is consistent with the goals we've set forth across the rest of our plan as well. So it's really working in tandem with what we're already doing. The fourth and final goal is in the area of facilities. And this really is, well, this is to monitor and improve the safety of physical, the physical environment and processes, such as the pickup and drop-off procedures, parking, um, as well as looking at having some hardtop area for student play. Um, and this goal really rose to the level of making it into our school improvement plan. Primarily, it was brought to us several times over the year by families as an area of concern. And certainly, nothing is more important than the safety of our children, and we need to make sure that they arrive to us and depart from us in a safe manner. This is a goal that's gonna take work from all angles, including parent education, parent compliance, staff compliance. We all need to be working on this one together. Some of the action items for this goal will include working more closely with our school resource officers at pickup and drop-off, surveying some neighboring school districts to identify alternatives to pickup and drop-off, see what, how other, other districts are handling that. Parent education related to parking, car seat use, travel to and from the buildings, and sign-out procedures for students. And then additionally, just investigating options for creating a safe area for hardtop play. A place where the kids can have, they can have sidewalk chalk and be drawn on the ground. They can have the tricycles out and be using them in a place that is safe and contained and everyone is comfortable with. So that's our proposed school improvement plan. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions or try to answer any questions that anyone may have related to it.
Go ahead, Janie.
I just had one question. And it's not really a question, it's just an observation. You had mentioned something about, um, about the attempts to get a PTO off the ground or get parents involved. And I, all of a sudden, was brought back to my kids, and we did a private preschool. And I don't remember private preschools having PTOs. So I was just wondering if, if you were having a feeling like we need one at that level because all the other Abington Public Schools have one? Or if there's anything that you're feeling like a PTO would support, if there's anything lacking in funding? Because a lot of times, that's what they'll take care of, or if that's kind of in, in to get them more involved where you're feeling like parents maybe aren't coming in where they should? So I was just curious about a PTO at that level.
Yeah, I think it's kind of an all-of-the-above.
Yep.
I mean, I think we certainly could benefit from some, you know, bringing, having the opportunity to bring in some enrichment programs for our students, some, you know, puppets or animals or Joe's Crazy Pritters, those things. I also think it's a great way for, for families just to become involved. As well as, I think our staff feels that, you know, we are part of the Abington Public School System, so it seems like there's sort of just that little dip, just another way of kind of being connected. And then, um, I think that there's, I know over time, they've tried to do a partnering at Beaverbrook, combining the two, and that can be difficult. I think that has challenges up on its own.
Yep.
And I don't think it necessarily needs to be the, um, the pure PTO model that's in other schools, but just something that there's a, a way for families to be more, more involved and to support, and to support our program more.
I know it's so hard, other schools find it when it's just a, a two-year school to get parents invested when they're leaving.
Before coming, before being elected, yeah, that, that's, so it was a center school. It was, but it was preschool, but they had kindergarten too. And the, having the kindergarten, so, because Ms. Thompson can relate, her PTO is very well-attended and very robust, and it has been. And, but we had the same trouble, it was myself and Pam Neely at the time, and we had trouble getting, because we actually stayed on as it transitioned to AEP, and it was hard to get. One thing, and I don't remember if you were there or not, but one thing that she brought up, and it got some attendance, was almost having like, because typically, meetings are in the evening, right? And it can be hard, but she brought up the idea, and maybe in the survey, of are parents available after they drop off their kids, or get coffee, bring a box of Joe to the library and kind of rent a room in the library during that time while their kids are there. That may be more conducive into getting parents. I don't remember if you were there or not when that was done, but it's just an idea. I don't, and I don't even know what her success was on it or not, but I just know it was an idea she was throwing around.
And I should actually tip my hat a little bit because Pam Neely still does.
I know, she, I know, she's amazing, yeah.
Even though she's been several years out.
Um, there was, there was a couple, and there wasn't so much, um, questions. I, I more wanted to comment. When I did the walk, when I did a walkthrough in March, I just, getting to see those touchscreens in action, um, it was awesome, especially being used in, um, the real special needs rooms where the kids, there was the verbal, the verbal difficulties, and some of the kids, they can use the touchscreen to work with the teachers. Uh, what they mean, I thought that was awesome. I saw the high school students being part of that as well. I thought that was great to see that back, because that was part of the reason for the way the location of this building was designed, having the preschool here where the older kids could get in there. So I was just, I just more wanted to comment on seeing those. I think these are great. I love that your goals continue to try to bring it all in, and, um, I'd like to work, maybe we could try to come up with a way, an area in that, in that parking lot. We could tape off a, a corner of it or something like that to work to maybe have some area for them to play on a hardtop during the day. We can look, try, maybe try to look to see what's available there in terms of parking.
I just wanted to add one more thing that I wasn't able to say, that if, um, there's lack of funding because of no PTO, that the Abington Education Foundation would for sure be interested in seeing any of your needs, so don't hesitate to send them their way.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you had something?
Couple things, just piggybacking on the PTO. I am a huge believer on a start as you mean to go on. And for years, I've been really advocating for more parent involvement. So I applaud the fact that you're still going after a PTO because that's where some of the real on-the-ground conversations happen, where community is built. And we all know that successful parent and/or homeschool relationships only benefit the schools, the children, and the community as a whole. So whatever we can do to help continue building that process, let us know. As far as the accreditation, um, how long of a process is this roughly? And then once, if you receive accreditation, do you know how long it lasts?
Sure. So the, the initial stage is a year. So the first, that initial self-study component is a 12-month, um, piece. And then the second year, then you have a 12-month period where it's a self-assessment. And that's when you're really gathering all your information and getting all your stuff really squared away and ready for presentation to your site manager. And then the third step is that they come out into a site visit and interview people who are related to the program. And then the fourth is you receive your decision. And once you receive your decision, assuming that we would be accredited, I would have no doubt, that accreditation lasts for five years. But the, the key on that is that you do need to apply each year to keep it, to keep it maintained. So it's a five-year period, but each year you need to be in touch with them to keep it going.
Okay. And then the only other thing is, and I know Chris hit on this a little bit, I was lucky enough to be in your building quite a bit this year and loved it. Particularly, just the use of assistive and adaptive technology in a seamless manner. It wasn't, let's everyone drop everything and go do this. Watching staff interact with kids, watching children have an understanding of how they were empowered to use what they needed to help themselves. I watched transitions that were mind-blowing because during the age and the needs of some of these children. The program, the staff is incredible. The kids are fabulous. And if people haven't been in that building, I can assure people that some magical things have been in there. And thank you all for just giving these kids a really great first start at school.
Thank you for that. And anyone is welcome at any time to come visit. We love visiting visitors.
Go ahead, Maria.
So question about, um, so first of all, I, I can't wait to come see, because I haven't been over to your space yet. But as far as being co-located here, um, does the preschool have, or can you have any opportunities to utilize other aspects of Glenowitz? Like is, are there cafeteria services? Is there prom, oh, yeah, nurses and?
Yep, actually, that was, that's a great point. I should have included that in my, in my highlights. Yes, we do, that we have students that stay, we have a handful of students that stay for a full day, and they do have access to cafeteria. They can receive lunch. Our nurse is, uh, is, our nurse is also the AEP nurse. Um, so there's that piece of it. So yeah, we do have other, um, there are other areas that we take advantage of.
I love the internship program. I love that the high school students are getting an opportunity to see what happens in the preschool, especially if they have an interest in pursuing that. Do you think that there are opportunities beyond who is located at Glenowitz in the parent community to get involved in the school? Like I'm thinking about a senior population or maybe alumni who are in school that might be going to school to be a yoga teacher or going to school to be a teacher. I wonder if there's an opportunity to pull in more of our community to the preschool. And I think having like a PTO or, or a group that's able to assist with that would be helpful. But I think that there's, you know, it's a really fun age group of kids, and once, you know, for me, now that my kids have outgrown that stage, now I wanna be back at senior's probably. I don't want parents, but.
Yeah, those are some great thoughts. Absolutely.
And my only other question was, in terms of curriculum and development, do you have an opportunity to talk to Beaverbrook to see, you know, the students that are coming in in kindergarten? What skills might they be lacking? What are we seeing for trends of needs? Do you have the opportunity to work together so that you can develop, you know, a, a more ready kindergarten student?
We do. Yep, we absolutely do. And one of the really, the biggest piece of it is making sure that we're hitting those standards, that, that we are, we are sending students off ready to go to kindergarten, ready to be kindergartners at Beaverbrook. That's really what our goal is. So we do try and align. We did purchase some curriculum that we're trying to align so that there's, you know, not kind of like chunks of curriculum, and I know Chris has probably spoken about that with you all. So we have purchased the Learning Without Tears curriculum that will be, um, part of our curriculum that will be weaving into our thematic units. But yeah, no, we absolutely do that. We try and work, the more that we can work to smooth those transitions for all of our students, the better, the better it is for everyone.
Thank you.
I have a similar question to Melanie. It may be more for Beaverbrook to answer, but, um, do you see a difference between kids who attend the preschool here and those who maybe go to like a private preschool? Like, is there any major difference there in terms of like their preparedness or anything like that?
I don't think so. I think just because we have so many kindergartners that there seems to be a fairly level playing field for students that attended preschool period because then we also have students that didn't attend preschool. So we're starting at the same place, and like, um, Ms. Robinson said, that we're really just working to, um, hit those standards. So if our preschoolers are hitting those preschool standards, then they'll be ready for kindergarten, and all of our kindergartners will start with the kindergarten standards as well.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Have a good night. Speaking of, um, next, Beaverbrook School Improvement Plan, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. I'm Julie Thompson, the principal of Beaverbrook, to present our, the important school improvement plan for 2023-2024. I'd like to thank our school council members. This year, we had three parent representatives, Kristy Erickson, Katie Cox, and Brooke Woodford. We had three teacher representatives, Kelly DeSantis, Rebecca Pulkinen, and Adrian Whalen. And our school committee representative, Heidi Hernandez. They provided great feedback and really good ideas all year long that contributed to our school improvement plan. Just to start off, I wanted to go over the, um, some highlights of our goals for this past year, the 22-23 preschool year. Our goal number one was to improve reading proficiency of all students. And some things that we implemented this year were, um, first and foremost, we. we implemented a new phonics curriculum for grades K through two. And all of our students will get explicit phonics instruction inside of their literacy block. The kindergarten grade one classrooms still use the Haggardic Phrenemic Awareness Curriculum. And this year we started a jumpstart caseload, if you will, right after DIBELS in September. We looked at the data and determined what students would benefit from interventions right away, rather than waiting for our SST process or teachers to realize after a month or so that maybe this student might need some extra support. We looked at that data, started a jumpstart caseload, and those students that were identified started receiving reading interventions by the end of September. So that was really helpful with, you know, with doing that with our, we have three reading interventionists, and they, you know, hit the ground running at the beginning of the year. And then we continue to provide reading interventions through the year for teachers who see that a student may be struggling with literacy. We continued with our Win What I Need model this year, where classroom teachers, grade-level teachers work together to identify students who may benefit from a certain skill or another. And one, one teacher would teach that specific skill, and all of the students in that grade level that would benefit from that skill would go see that teacher. It was twice a week for 30 minutes. And the students love it because they get to both sit in a classroom with different students, see a different teacher for a little while, they have some fun, they work on some different skills, and then they go back to their classrooms. Our second goal for this past year was to improve supports and outcomes for students with disabilities as well as English learners. One of the biggest changes to our, to Beaverbrook this year was the addition of a foundational English learner classroom. This past year, it was a multi-grade classroom, grades one and two. And we hired a teacher who was duly certified. Also, she also spoke Portuguese and Spanish. And students who are identified as entering, newcomers, would be placed in that classroom. And they would receive instruction in their content areas, just as the students in their grade level would. And she would use the shelter and immersion strategies with those students. So it was a very language-rich environment. There was a lot of previewing the vocabulary and learning the academic content as well as the academic vocabulary that went along with that. Our ELA department held a family meet and greet at Beaverbrook that was very well-attended. Our special educators received Gordon Gillingham training. Our special education model at Beaverbrook was adjusted to best support all students with disabilities in the least restrictive environments. And all teachers received professional development focused on strategies to best support our English learners. And our third goal this past year was to increase family engagement and student learning experiences. It was really great to welcome families back to school. We hadn't been able to do that in quite some time without certain restrictions in place. We had open house, parent conferences. We started a family math night where families came with their students, and they, we had plenty of games for each grade level that only required dice and dominoes. We had lots of teachers attend, and it was very well-attended, and it was a lot of fun. Kindergarten holds their Veterans Day event, and they did it in person again this year, which was wonderful. We had Pirate Literacy Night, Grade One Spring Show, Grade Two Vocabulary Parade and Celebration. We had volunteer classroom readers all year long. And that was just really nice to have families back in the, in the building. And we also work with PTO on many different concert events. The kindergarten popsicle party, bowling night, Providence Bruins. We brought back, or they brought back, the Special Someone Dance just for grade two to keep the attendance down, because we have such a large population at Beaverbrook now. We have 185 second graders. So that was their special night with a boo bash, a holiday shop, and we held Thanksgiving and holiday drives in concert with our PTO. So those were our three goals for the 22, 23 school year. And looking forward into our 23, 24 school year, our first goal in the area of curriculum and instruction is to improve writing proficiency for all students. And we plan to do that by dedicating professional development time to working with the Massachusetts ELA writing standards and using that as our base for our writing instruction in classrooms. We are looking to create common rubrics, common writing prompts, and create a culture of writing in all content areas. Our second goal for the 23, 24 school year is to improve student supports and outcomes for student social emotional needs. We have hired a full-time school adjustment counselor for this year. We want to create opportunities for collaboration between our educators and the school adjustment counselor. We are going to look at creating a second step, which is our social emotional curriculum that we've been using for a few years, create a pacing guide for all of our classrooms so that everyone is receiving the same, the same lesson on, you know, being, being kind to one another, conflict resolution on the playground. So we can have that consistent language from class to class. And we are going to streamline and update the processes around mental health committee. We meet every couple of weeks with our behaviorists, with our nurse, our school adjustment counselor, our school psychologist, and look at students that may need some extra support, who maybe have some difficulties at home or having some difficulties at school, and see how we can best support them. And our third and final goal for this coming year is to increase opportunities for all families to engage in the school community, similar to last year. But we are looking at specifically, specific areas. In our open house, we're looking to increase the interactivity of all the educators, because typically parents would go to a classroom and just talk to the teacher. And we have so many other educators in our building that it would be great for everyone to know. So we're going to look at ways to incorporate them in the night as well. We will be implementing a welcome to kindergarten event for parents. Hosting school-wide curriculum nights, we're looking at, starting in addition to the family math night, a family STEM night as well. And we're going to continue hosting the ELA department meet and greet and collaborating with PTO on in-school and after-school events and fundraisers. So those are our three goals for this coming school year. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Just looking back at the summary of the 22, 23 goals. Goal number one, improve reading proficiency of all students. And I apologize if somehow I was reading and you were speaking and I missed it. But I'm just wondering what measures were in place to see if it worked and, and how did that go? So do we know if we reached that goal?
Well, this, we did, we are looking at our end-of-year DIBELS data. Our first graders in particular made really great gains. And they were a fairly large piece of that jumpstart caseload, just based on the data itself. So we did see some improvement. We had an end-of-year intervention meeting to look at that data and see how effective that jumpstart caseload was. And the data showed that it was, was indeed effective for those, those students.
I know that before, with, with COVID, we were talking about a huge monster deficit. And are you, is, are you getting the sense that teachers are feeling like they're not as far behind as they were a few years ago?
I am, yes. I think that our current second graders, our outgoing second graders are the last class, if you will, to be really impacted by the closure, by the hybrid year and things, and things like that. And they, they really, really rose to the occasion. And I feel like they've, that group has made a lot of really good improvement. But I don't, I, our kindergarten teachers have, have said that they feel like they're back to normal with the students that are coming in.
That's great, thank you.
No, I was gonna say, that's great to hear, because what I wrote down was, I know when Ms. Bressi was up here, like, I think, and I know, well, as a parent anyway, of somebody that was in there, the reading is where that group took the biggest hit. So I was wondering how it affected with the timing of it. Also, it's great to hear that it's being seen less and less of an impact now as they start school at Beaverbrook. So that was kind of what I wrote down, so.
And we also implemented the explicit phonics instruction this year, which has definitely been helpful.
I'm absolutely good, no, no.
So Erin, a second grader, I'm impressed with the fact that this year was definitely a much bigger growth year than I've seen in the last two years, like, due to COVID. One of the things at home that has resonated with my student is the wind block. He had a great experience in that. He loved getting to meet different people and different teachers. It sounds like that's something that you want to continue. You're seeing both educator and student positive feedback.
Yes, we are looking, we are looking to continue that. We may tweak the, tweak it a little bit, but we're going to continue with the wind block. We may be able to have smaller groups or more educators in the mix to be able to make those groups smaller and possibly more effective. But we have heard really great things from the students, and they, they do love, love it. And the teachers, the teachers like to be able to focus on one skill with one group for even a short period of time.
Yep, great. Are you seeing trends behaviorally? So I, I mean, obviously, my kids are two different humans to begin with, but just the, the need for movement and the attention was different for my second child, who was so young during COVID. Are you seeing any trends that the behavioral needs are getting less? I don't want to say difficult is what comes to mind, and I don't mean it, that it's a negative, but less disruptive, I guess, to the classroom? Or are you seeing, you are seeing?
Yes, our, our second grade class had, we had a lot more support at recess. Our school adjustment counselor would go to recess, our nurse would go to recess. They had their own professional practice goals around implementing games, facilitated games at recess, just to help with that social emotional connection, but also to help with taking turns and things, and things like that that they may have missed in kindergarten.
That, that was actually where I was leaning, was recess. I know sometimes some classes had extra recess. Is that something that you're still seeing? Do you see a need for more than one recess period?
I don't think so. I think that some classes may have had an extra recess, you know, maybe a 10-minute break, but also it's really kind of teacher preference. Or it could have been a reward for the class, classroom that day or that week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Up next, I report the superintendent of schools, a consideration for a change in the destination for high school travel abroad.
So I mentioned this, I think, to all the committee members. The trip that was, you approved to go to Spain was not a hit with the students. And so in your packet, you have a completely updated, all the paperwork is in for a switch to Germany, Switzerland, and Italy. This seems to be more appealing to our students. And I'll answer any questions that I can, but as I said, it's, you know, everything's very complete in this packet. And, well, depending on your consideration, the students would like to go to Germany, Switzerland, and Italy next year.
I think my obvious first question is, they are seeing that this is more conducive to what they'd like to do? So it doesn't get out there and? So far. Okay.
When do they plan on putting this out? Would this be?
They already started putting it out, which is why I asked your blessing at the last meeting, because we didn't want to get it out there if you didn't feel that you would ultimately vote favorably on it.
Right, so when would they have to apply? Like, do we know when the application is for the kids, is that on page two or?
I, I don't know. I can get that, I can get that information too.
I think my only concern is you don't, I just hate to see kids miss out on the opportunity to apply if, you know, school's out for the year.
No, no, Karen's already put it out there. She's, I believe, she's gotten some good responses, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily locked.
And it's for juniors and seniors, it looks like? Let me answer my own question. This says 11:12, I see it now.
Yes.
My daughter, who just finished junior year, definitely knew about it, so they've been talking about it.
Okay.
She's not going.
I mean, I'm, I don't have any question, any other questions? Anybody have any other questions about it?
Do they give any language preparation ahead of time for any of these languages?
Sure, they dabble in it, but there's no formal instruction.
I know at the schools that I've worked at, you go and, you have tour guides there that will take you everywhere you need to go.
Yeah, I guess.
English is pretty widely spoken in, you know, Germany for sure, Switzerland for sure. So I think they'd like the kids to maybe make an attempt to know a few words, but it definitely isn't going to be a barrier if, you know, they don't.
Hi. I'm a proponent of travel, always will be.
So Dan might be looking for a motion to approve the high school travel to Germany, Switzerland, and Italy next February, as presented.
I'll make the motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
If we voted for it, does that mean we get to go?
For the near.
Want to be a chaperone? Report of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michella.
Thank you. Before I ask for your consideration, I just want to spend a second acknowledging the work of Lynette McNeil, Sarah Ganey, and Teresa Minahan this year. As you know, there's been multiple funding sources that have been new to us over the last few years. ARPA funds, ESAR funds, our regular grants, plus our general fund. And Lynette, and Sarah, and Teresa, really throughout this year especially, have been walking this funding with me. And I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work and the great work that the three of them have, have done to help us, as we refer to it, land the financial plane at the end of the year. So with that being said, for your consideration, I would ask for an approval to transfer the sum of $129,000 from our salary account to our expense account, budget allocation, as you voted in December. This end-of-the-year transfer is inclusive of all salary and expenses from the general fund for this fiscal year.
Anybody have any questions? I don't. I'll make a motion to approve.
All second?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All set. So next school committee meeting date, so in your agenda, it's August 29th, which is the day before school starts in Abington. We're, it's open to be adjusted up until two days before we're gonna have it. We've gone back and forth at times. Sometimes it's the night before, sometimes it's the night of the first day. If anybody has a strong preference now, we can adjust it now, but it can always be adjusted in August as well. So I don't know if anybody had a strong preference as to, is it easier the night before the first day of school? Or is it easier the night of the first day of school?
Personally, I prefer the night of the first day of school, so that if it.
I kind of do too as well, but I'm open either way, so.
I'd actually prefer it the day before, but I would defer to those of younger kids. The night before might be tough.
What do you think?
I'm good with the day of.
The day of?
It does, I, I think.
I'm trying to think what.
Either way, it's fine.
Yeah. All right, let's, since it's printed as August 29th right now, we'll leave it as that right now, but we'll have time to adjust it as we get close to August. And we can, we can move it from there if we need to, all right? And like I said, everybody, as long as it gets out there and ahead of time. So for right now, we're gonna keep it as August 29, 2023, at 7:00 PM here in the library. I wanted to, I wanted to bring up one piece of informational items. It's actually not in the packet, I don't think, right? It's not, there's not, there's nothing specific in there about Hannah Terrell.
Just mentioned, they never sent me.
Okay, so we did reach out to Project 351 for a quick write-up. We didn't get it. So off of what I could remember from a face, from Facebook post, we just want to acknowledge Hannah Terrell, graduating senior. She was named the Project 351 Service Hero Award recipient last week at their, I'm gonna say, end-of-year type event that they have.
It's their alumni event.
Okay. Hannah, do you want to speak to you? You may know it better than me.
I can actually do this one.
Yes, thank you.
So Project 351, for those who don't know, eighth graders from all 351 towns, communities within the state of Massachusetts. towns, communities within the state of Massachusetts are asked to put forth an ambassador for their year. And they grew up in the, in the Three Fifty-One community doing service leadership of all manner of incredible things for as long as they want to continue with the program. I think I am allowed to say here that Hannah Terrell, from the time she became an ambassador and went on to become an alumni, shared a joy of leadership and service that was remarkable. And she has since extended a hand to all of these successive alumni and ambassadors that have come through the town of Abington. So, with Hannah at the helm, Abington really has developed a reputation within the Project Three Fifty-One community for going above and beyond in a realm of service that is fairly remarkable. Our students have done some incredible things. And without Hannah knocking on doors and really working hard, so much of it would not have been possible for the students who came after her. So, every year, they put their kids in groups and they are working in honor of particular service heroes. So, it can be people like Devol Patrick, Malala, Pete Frady, for example. So, there might be people who are walking down the street with you or they might be people, be people who have done wonderful things across the world or people who are no longer with us. So, to have Hannah named as the senior class service hero is truly an honor and it's something to be proud of. And I, I know her family is proud, but I really want to extend my congratulations personally because this, her influence has touched our family personally. But, for anyone who reads about her or sees this, it's a truly remarkable thing. And congratulations to Hannah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not gonna even add anything to it. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you very much. I think everybody knows what she's been able to accomplish and what the positive influence on the Abington Public Schools. The only other thing I'll mention is, within the packet, there's a bunch of the names that were hired for the summer program, which begins on Wednesday, July fifth, I believe. And with that, I'll be looking, unless anybody has anything they wanted to add, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn for the year.
I'll make a motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.